Our roll call, please.
Counsel Honan.
Here.
Counsel Fusillo.
Here.
Counsel Munson. Counsel Belcher. Counsel DeMarco.
Here.
Counsel Flockhart.
Here.
Counsel Aiello.
Yep.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Here.
President Lutteiri.
Here.
Thank you.
I ask everybody to rise for the National Anthem led by Counselor DeMarco.
Let's just do the pledge.
You don't want me to say it? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask everybody to please remain standing. We lost three people in the past couple of weeks, and I would just like to have a moment of silence for them. The first is Judy Walsh, longtime Winthrop employee, over 27 years in the treasurer's office. Also, former counselor Mike LaCerto's mom, Mary Ann LaCerto, who passed recently. And just yesterday, former council president and mother of Superintendent Lisa Howard, Maureen Gill, passed. I'd like to have everybody take a moment of silence for them. Thank you. There were minutes circulated from April 5th, 2022 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Counsel Belcher, second by Counselor DeMarco. Any additions, deletions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it. Minutes have been passed. We have two citations to present this evening. I'll do the first one, since it's close to home. Be it known to all that Town of Winthrop and the Winthrop Town Council hereby offer its congratulations to General Lutteiri at Middlebury College on behalf of the residents of Town of Winthrop, your hockey fans, and especially your family. We congratulate you on your 2022 NCAA D3 national championship with the season, perfect season, 27 wins, zero losses, zero ties, the only NCAA hockey team in all divisions in history to have a perfect record. NSCAC leading scorer, first team All-Nescac, NSCAC NCAA All-Tournament Team. We offer you nothing but the best in all your future endeavors, given this 26th day of April 2022, signed by myself and other counselors. So, I thank her, congratulate her. And then we are very fortunate tonight. Thank you. We are very fortunate tonight to have Jillian Dempsey here. So, I've known Jillian for quite a while, and when I was involved with Winthrop Youth Hockey, and we would have our season-ending banquets, I remember one year, her dad used to coach a Peewee team usually, and dad couldn't make the banquet, and he sent his young daughter to come and give a speech for the team. And we're like, wow, this young lady's going to come and give a speech? And she just did an incredible job. She's, we're fortunate as a town to have her as a teacher. She's incredible with our children, comes from a fantastic family. And I would just like to, on behalf of the council, offer her this citation. Be it known to all that the Town of Winthrop and the Winthrop Town Council hereby offers its congratulations to Jillian Dempsey, captain Boston Pride hockey team and WHL-PHF. On behalf of the residents of the Town of Winthrop and sports fans of all ages and gender, it is quite an honor not only to congratulate you on behalf of Boston Pride, winning their second consecutive Isabel Cup championship, currently holding the all-time PHF record for games played, goals, assists, and points, winner of the Clarkson Club back in 2015 with Harvard University, being named one of the 25 most powerful women in hockey. In historically registering over 100 points during your hockey career, we offer you nothing but all the best in your future endeavors, given this 22nd day of April 2022 at Winthrop, Massachusetts, signed by James Lutteiri, Town Council President, Richard Fusillo, Precinct 1, John Munson, Precinct 2, Hannah Belcher, Precinct 3, Barbara Flockhart, Precinct 4, Joseph Aiello, Precinct 5, Stephen Ruggiero, Vice President, Tracy Honan, Counselor-at-Large, and Robert DeMarco, Counselor-at-Large. Congratulations, Jillian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dempsey.
As great of a hockey player as you are, as great of a hockey player as you are, you're even a better teacher.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Public hearing, we have none this evening. Correspondence before I go to Denise, I did receive a couple of emails from Michael Demento regarding walkways at Ingleside Park and some lighting at Ingleside Park, and I can assure him that those will be looked at and taken care of. I believe the walkways we're taking care of today are beginning to be taken care of, and there are still a couple of lights that I know there were issues with, and we will have that done, and I thank him for his correspondence. Denise, do we have further correspondence?
That we're good.
All right. Committee before, it's Finance Committee.
So, we, Finance Committee met just before this meeting. We had one motion in front of us. That motion was, "I move that the Town Council declare as surplus the below vehicle," the vehicle being the Boston Whaler 25 Guardian, "thereby authorized by the treasurer-collector to post for sale through an approved auction site or take any other action thereto." This boat was surplus, so we have come out with a positive recommendation for the sale of this, of this boat.
Okay, and we will take that up under Old Business. Rules and ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel President. The Rules and Ordinances Committee met last week. In attendance were myself, Counselor Munson, and Counselor Belcher, as an ex-officio member. We had, we spent significant amount of time taking public comment from the folks that were both there in the room and on Zoom. We recognized that a lot of work went into the draft ordinance that was sent to us, primarily put together by Counselor Honan in accordance with the interim town manager and KMP. So, you know, we kind of, we recognize that, but at the same time, we want to give it its due diligence that it deserves. So, we had our first sort of public hearing, more so than anything, where we just went through the ordinance, section by section, soliciting public comment, and making sure that all parties involved and anyone with an opinion on it had the opportunity to be heard. We're going to keep this in committee, at least for another week, as we continue to do research and let some of the public comment and feedback we have marinate for a little bit, for lack of a better term. But that's currently where we stand on this right now. So, there's no motion tonight coming out of Rules and Ordinance.
All right. Committee on Committees?
The Committee on Committees, we, so at our last council meeting, it was referred to us to investigate appointing the town manager, someone from the school department, and someone from the, the police department to the CDICR. According to Council Rule 9, Section A, bear with me, A, I, A subsection I, the CDICR is established. In the second paragraph, the, the rule already gives deference to the council. The Town Council may appoint additional non-voting associate members as it determines necessary. So, with that information, myself, Counsel Flockhart, and Counselor Belcher, the three members of the Committee on Committees, attended the CDICR meeting a couple of weeks ago, where we sort of brought this idea to them. They welcomed it with open arms. In fact, they even made a motion and voted that night to request that the Town Council appoint the town manager or their designee, the police chief or their designee, and a member of the school department, the superintendent, or their designee in a associate, non-voting member role. They believe, and just judging from what we heard at the, at the meeting from my fellow colleagues on the committee, we believe that this would help give that committee the institutional support that it needs, and also help them kind of answer some questions having those folks in the room. So, that is something that would be welcomed, and I would support that appointment, as I believe my other colleagues on the subcommittee would as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. All right. Town Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm very happy to know it's less than 30 days, as of today, that Town Manager Marino will be taking the reins. We look forward to him taking those reins and supporting him in any way possible. So, having said that, the, last week or so, there was a, two trees taken down up by the Alentis Marina Project. The detail officer notified the DPW director immediately of the illegal removal of those trees. The tree warden responded immediately up there, gave a cease and desist, and also is working with that association for either donations to the tree fund and/or replacing those trees. So, we'll have more to come on that. I know I've heard about it in the community. I'm sure the counselors have, and Council President also inquired to what was being done on it. So, I just wanted to bring the council up to speed on that. EB Newton Clock Tower, the bid was awarded. They'll go up and take the actual clock faces down and bring them back to their shops, order the parts necessary for the clocks. They will be fully functioning electric clocks in there with daylight savings mechanisms in there, so it will have daylight saving timing with them as well, and then, then repair the entire clock. It will not repair the copper roof, which is green. If the, I talked to the facility manager today, he said, if we actually shine that up in about a year, it's going to be green again. So, that's not part of the bid. It wasn't part of the bid documents, and they came in at about eighty, eighty-two thousand four hundred dollars for that. So, right under our, I think eighty-four is what we appropriated by council on that. And Millers Field, I know there's been some talk about the MOU of Millers Field, but we're still waiting for determination from this council as who will retain ownership of that. It was always under the school ownership as Millers Field. It came back into the town's ownership as it was declared surplus for construction. You know, there's arguments on both sides of who should, who should take primary control over that. There's also concerns about having access for the public and open access for the public. And having said that, Larissa's been working on a schedule with the school department to start the open access in early June, right after graduation. We'll have senior volunteers through the tax abatement program there in the morning hours, and then that will get us through the month of June, and in July, we'll have workers for Parks and Recs in the mid-afternoon and late afternoon there for open hours for, for the community during the summer. So, you'll have some open hours there. But, you know, whoever takes ownership has to realize we're four years into an eight-year, you know, turf replacement, which is going to be, you know, about a million dollars, and we have not even planned on that. We don't have capital, it's not my capital plan, so we still have to think about that. How are we going to fund that? Who's going to fund it? Whose responsibility is going to be funding it? You know, now's a great time to start looking at whether the state will fund it or not as well. So, those are, those are the issues with Millers Field, and I urge the council, before I can enter into an MOU, to decide those key factors as to who's going to retain ownership of that. May 21st is a busy Saturday in Winthrop. We have the Spring Fair at Ingleside Park that'll have a bike rodeo, Bike Winthrop as well as Parks and Recs. The Winthrop Police Department will be sponsoring that. Police Department will be giving out helmets and also funding the bike instructors for bike rodeo. So, we look forward to that. Also, the same day, we have the Massachusetts Police Explorer Conference here in Winthrop, and that'll take place on School Street, as well the Larson Rink parking lot and the Coming School. Lieutenant Rogers has been working with Director Demento and the school department to make sure we have access to those areas, and that also with Director Driscoll, make sure there's no crossover between events. The Blue Line closure is still on diversion. Buses are at airport to downtown for the next two weeks. There'll also be a diversion in a couple of weeks from Orient Heights into Revere Train Stations, as they redo those lines as well. So, we'll have to get off at Orient Heights and get on a bus going to either Beaumont or Revere Beach Stations. So, just be aware of that. Also, tunnel closures, there's been much talk about that. Deputy Chief Goodwin attended the meeting in my absence when I was on vacation last week about the closures. We're going to have full closures of the, of the tunnel starting in May of 2023 to September 2023. We are very concerned with the traffic delays and ambulance access to the major hospitals in Boston. We've asked, you know, the state to include action ambulance and the Winthrop Fire Department and the Winthrop Police Department in any future meetings, so we can work on that as well. Swings at Ingleside Park are back audit. I spoke with the director of Parks and Recs, who showed me the email that he has been sending to the company and received it back. You know, they're guaranteeing next week, I heard that four weeks ago. He's also looking at other supply places such as Home Depot and Lowe's to see if they can match the hardware. They have the swings, they don't have the hardware, but it has to be the identical hardware that's necessary to attach those swings to reduce liability to the town. So, I ask people to, please be patient, we are working on that as well. So, the autism fundraiser was a week ago Saturday, the Winthrop Police Department, as well as the Doug Flutie Foundation, Police Department versus the Fight Department, that has raised right now over $7,000. Five thousand will go to Doug Flutie Foundation, 2,000 will go to a local family who is trying to buy a safety bed for their special needs child. So, we are trying to get that from seven to eight thousand dollars. So, we're still selling T-shirts. Anyone can make a donation directly at the police department to the autism fund, and we'll make sure the family and, and the Flutie Foundation gets evenly divided amongst them. And so, they, our local people are taking care of as well as our statewide people. Now, that will conclude my report. I will end it by submitting my budget. This budget, we've been working on for some time. I want to thank Steve Cerulli and also Robbie Powes for their guidance and assistance with this budget. We went simple on this budget, so people can understand it. It's a no-thrills budget. You're not going to see a lot of charts and graphs in it. You're going to see a lot of data, but you're going to see correct data. And in the back of the book, it'll be a line-by-line expenditure per department. So, at the front of it will be the summaries, and at the back of it will be a full line-by-line per department.
I wonder where you guys got that?
Chief, who won the hockey game?
The police always win. I don't know, because I wasn't there. I was in Aurora.
Of course, much of what's in this book will be presented at the Spring Forum at seven o'clock, and we'll start the process. This also officially starts the time clock of the council, about 45 days from today's date to approve the budget, which I believe Council President has thought of on June 7th would be.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in a minute. Does that conclude your report, Mr. Town Manager?
That does, thank you.
Thank you. So, just a couple of things, and I'll open it up for questions. I do want to thank former Counselor Farino for really kickstarting the EB Newton Clock Tower and being able, when we originally made this motion, it was really to just repair the tower without the clock, which was kind of, not, kind of crazy, but we just didn't think the money was there. But we were able to get the clock and the tower fixed, which is fantastic. And again, thank you, Counselor Farino, for spearheading that and getting us started, and we will take it to the finish line. Also, just if, if maybe Council President is, just talk a minute about tomorrow, Wednesday will be the CBD pavement will begin, the final surface.
It's Phase 1 of the pavement will begin tomorrow in the Center Business District. They've been replacing some panels down there as well. I think it's important for everyone to know that, either because of graffiti or because they didn't come in with state compliance with the panel. So, those are being fixed before paving, and so paving will start at, on Somerset and Cottage tomorrow. It'll go up Bartlett, Williams, and Adams, and then come down Woodside. Phase 2 of the paving will start in May, and it will go from CVS into French Square. They'll get Hagman, Hagman Extension, the parking lot on Hagman, between Hagman and Putnam and Putnam. So, it's, we're beginning the final phases of that with the strict guidance that they be out of the Center Business District by May 28th, and they'll have some work in other parts out, just outside the district, but the district will be done.
Okay. And just also on that, I would like to ask, and with the council's permission, maybe we could put it on the agenda, if not, that's fine, because there's already been a, a plan approved for all the landscaping. And the only thing I would like to add is there's no evergreen in there, there's no blue spruce or anything like that, that we would be able to have some sort of Christmas event like we've had for years and years and years. There is a spot right in the middle of the center. Now, these trees have been ordered already, because we've already discussed them, the plan is in place, but we will, we could, if we want, I did ask the DPW director before I even came to the council, but if there is any desire to change the middle planting, so right dead in the middle, we could potentially put a Bruce, a blue spruce or something evergreen, that we would be able to continue the tradition of having a Christmas holiday fair, Santa Claus coming into the center. So, you know, I'm just going to throw it out there now, we don't have to discuss it now, but I will probably put it on the agenda for next Tuesday's meeting to see if there's any desire to do that. But I didn't want to eliminate that tradition without at least trying to put something in front of the council.
Mr. President, just on that, I mean, you know, the trees are audited and tagged.
They are.
So, the quicker the better.
Yes.
If we, I mean, it's going to consider a change audit as well, which we don't mind doing, but the quicker the better on the decision on that.
And just also to follow up on the Town Manager submitting the budget, so that basically starts the clock. So, now there is 45 days from now that we must vote on a budget, so that would take us to June 10th. So, the plan will be, we will, we will be asking for a special council meeting on May 31st, which would be the Tuesday after Memorial Day, and we would have a special council meeting with the sole purpose of discussing the budget. It will give counselors a week before, I know this has been discussed in prior years, it will give us a week before to bring amendments before the council, if the counselors have any individual amendments. We could hash out those amendments, and then we could vote on the budget the following Tuesday, which I believe is June 7th-ish, which will give us those, the time before the 45 days. Also, we will be, this will be, there'll be a notice in the paper on the budget, and we will be having a public hearing on the budget, I believe, May 17th. May 17th, we'll be having a public hearing for the public, obviously, to ask questions on the budget. We will also ask the Finance Commission, and I know we're pushing them a bit, but to try to give the counselors enough time to really digest the budget and have impact on any amendments, we would be asking the Finance Commission for their final report by the Thursday prior to May 31st, which I think is the 25th or 26th. That will give the counselors the weekend to digest that material and come prepared on the special meeting on May 31st to discuss the budget. Other than that, I'll open up for questions for the Town Manager on the Town Manager's Report. Counsel Aiello.
Can, just on one item, just a suggestion on the holiday tree, if we could also have a reminder graphic of what the landscaping plan looks like, so that we can then see what the substitution looks like?
Absolutely.
That'd be great. That'd be helpful. To the Town Manager, number one, you, you mentioned the closure of the Blue Line and the closure of the tunnels for next year. So, I want to pivot to sort of a quick ferry discussion. I understand we have an agreement in principle with Mass DOT for this year's ferry funding. I was wondering if you could describe it and describe what that means in terms of getting from here to start of service?
Sure. So, Mass DOT has agreed to, at least by email, we haven't signed the contracts yet, those are being prepared, to fund the deficit for last year, which is eighty-something thousand dollars, and also fund 179,000, I believe it is, for next year's service matching, you know, also getting Quincy on board for their 160,000 dollars with the fare boxes. If we take last year's revenues in the fare boxes, will put us to full operation of the ferry. Now, having said that, we've activated the employees off of unemployment, back to paid status. We have, have the ferry in Gloucester getting repaired, the Coast Guard's on standby for inspections. So, our goal would be to get it, hopeful to get it by May 15th in full operation. I've spoken with Quincy this morning. Once I know the Coast Guard has given us an exact inspection date, I will contact Quincy again with a solid start date for back to service. We still need captains for the weekends, and anyone knows a captain, please send them our way. We certainly want a qualified captain, and they will have to go through some field testing to ensure that they, they can handle a ferry vessel with passengers aboard that boat. So, we'll also be looking for a ferry manager. We need to have a person who has a history in transportation. DOT wants that. They want someone who's going to manage that with some background, some Counsel Aiello. I know you're familiar with the transportation world, and if you have anybody that's interested, and I'll be reaching out to my contacts, several of the state agencies and local businesses within the downtown Boston, to see if they have a part-time manager that wants to also part-time manage our ferry as well. Does someone get a full-time job between two agencies? I think it's a good way to go as well. So, that's what I can tell you. I'll be happy to answer any other questions, but that's what I know so far.
That's, that's great news. I wanted to, I just wanted to shine a light on the great news that you and the Town Council President have performed. There's also, I believe, according to Town Council President, which I think is very unusual for this year, an allowance in case the inspection up in Gloucester leads to the need for some repairs, we've got some budget reserved for that. So, it's a great, you guys have done a great work, and I just wanted to shine a light so the, the people of this town who support the ferry can be thankful for the work the two of you have done.
We're glad to have it back, and I know the Town Manager from another coastal community is, is happy to, to have it as well, so hopefully you can steal someone from Ipswich and bring them down here.
And one, one other item related to the ferry, the, the Fire Chief may or may not have heard this discussion, but the city of Boston has, is petitioning Mass DOT for next year for the Mass DOT to run MBTA ferry from East Boston to downtown Boston as part of the mitigation package for the tunnel closure for the summer. I asked informally friends of mine who work in the city administration if they'd be open to a joint effort with the Town of Winthrop, and they are open to that, so.
Good.
I'm assuming you guys know all the connections, but if I can be helpful either at Mass DOT or City of Boston.
Yeah.
We could have another good year next year, and, and then maybe get on to a permanent MBTA running of the ferry on the MBTA nickel.
Yeah, I, I think that's important, because like, right now, out of the East Boston ferry coming out of Jeffrey's Point, all you have to do is show your Charlie card, and you don't get charged.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's disadvantageous to us, because we're charging, so you can take the train to Maverick, get off, and jump on a ferry for free and go the rest of the way into Boston on a ferry. So, you know, we definitely need to have the equal treatment from the T for East Boston and Winthrop, especially during that closure.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, there's a, if you, if you look at the Hingham experience, Hingham used the reconstruction of the Southeast Expressway to get a mitigation ferry. That turned into a permanent ferry on the Charlie Cod.
Yeah.
It's been a success, and we should try to mimic that, which is what the city is doing. So, we've got some allies there and in Quincy.
Good.
So, keep up the pressure, and that's, that's great.
Keep pushing.
We'll look for Mr. Marino to help. One other item coming up, and I'm not sure if the council members want to, here I see more about any of this. Again, I ran into an East Boston environmental person. There is an MVP grant that. Boston environmental person. There is an MVP grant that the town of Winthrop is managing, which is Municipal Vulnerability Assessment Grant.
Yep.
So it's great, we're in the lead, and we're coordinating with Revere and East Boston about protection from climate impacts potentially. And there's a May 19th presentation on Zoom. I don't have the details yet, but if the town planner could give that to you for next week's meeting?
Sure. Okay, now, the planner is on top of that, and also they'll be looking to come to the council meeting with the, to have a presentation before the council. They were looking for early June, so I'll coordinate that with the council president and the planner.
Okay, that would be great. And then the last request is, through the good work of Councilor Honan, we discovered that it looks like that the Rink has not been paying a water bill, at least in the 2019 assessment that we got. And I know she has asked you to confirm that, hopefully for the next meeting, so we can see that in the budget process. It would be good to know how long that arrangement has been going on, if that's been repeated for many years. So to the extent you can look through historical records and get back to us for next week. This is not to say that the Rink doesn't deserve help, but we just need to be transparent about it if that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I think there was, depending on which CFO you talk to, what age you got. So I don't, I think the, you know, the council president was relying on information he's received. When we looked at the documents, there were part of the town buildings that have been abated. I certainly have abated them myself as town manager, is a historical practice of abating them. With the Rink, I think the, you know, what we really have to look at is getting them on their own meter. They're not metered and they're not piped directly, which is a problem. I wouldn't feel comfortable saying how much is the Rink and how much is the school until we get them on their own separate meter. We have started that process. We actually have water pipes brought into their building through the Center District project because in anticipation of closing the middle school. So we're halfway there on getting them their own separate meter, so we can have more transparency, more accuracy in our transparency, you know. But again, a lot of, all the school buildings, police department, fire department, all our cemeteries are abated as well. The Harbor Building is not, and Marina is not abated, and neither is EB Newton School is not abated. It's a revolving account. So that's what I can tell you right now, and I'll be happy to ask Director Calla to provide how long it's been going on for. But my guess, it's been going on since the Rink has been in existence.
Yeah, and it's shared with the school, and the school's been closed for a while, so, and it doesn't have its own meter. But yeah, it's just getting all the enterprise funds being treated equally across the board. Not to say they don't need support from time to time, but we just need to make sure we can see what the data looks like. Okay, thank you. End of my questions.
Anything, Vice President Magriero?
Just a quick circle back on to the tree discussion. Even though I have learned a lot during our subcommittee meeting about trees, I would feel more comfortable maybe having the tree warden as a part of that discussion, because when we talk about changing landscaping, I know what I know and I know what I don't know, and I am not a good landscaper, so I would like to have a professional sort of in the room as a part of that discussion, if at all possible, just so we kind of know what we're doing and what we're planting and what the effects of that are going to be in 100 years, when that tree is big, small, tall, whatever. I don't know.
And just to the vice president's point, I think, you know, we have on contract a landscape designer, architect and designer who might be more appropriate to give us
Yeah, fair enough.
the long-term effects of a larger tree like that. So we'll reach out to Director Calla, have him consult with the design architects on the job.
Okay.
And also include Mr. O'Donnell in that conversation.
Absolutely. No, thank you. I appreciate that. And then we touched on the renovations, but the clock tower repairs at the EB Newton, and, you know, just from going in that building casually for meetings time to time, I know there's more than just the clock tower that needs repair. So I think that this is a great start, but just something that we want to keep in mind moving forward, that there's a lot more to do in that building. And so if we can kind of chip away at these things one by one, there's a lot more to do throughout the entire town. I understand that. But this is a historical building, and it's something that is right in the dead center of town, in the Center Business District, that just got renovated and is going to look beautiful, hopefully. So just another thing for us to kind of think about as we move forward.
I think you're bugging my office. So this afternoon, with the council president in the room, I discussed that with the building maintenance director, and he brought up to my attention that we've only done partial roofing over there. He was on the roof the other day, and two of the sides, and he said, you need to finish the roof.
Yeah.
That's going to be a high priority, to finish the roof. He's going to get us quotes on that, and the exact damage that it's causing interior and exterior. And so we can move on that. That's going to have to be moved up the priority list.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilman Munson?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to ask, if I wanted to suggest someone to help out with the playground equipment that actually is in metal works and can actually possibly help fabricate the missing piece, should I just email you directly?
Sure, yeah.
And as far as the captains are concerned for the ferry, I know a couple of commercial captains that are looking for some extra work. Just a direct email to you guys?
You can, either myself or Stacy DeChiar, the Human Resource Director.
Okay.
Either or.
And then the last question I wanted to ask was, in terms of the trees that were both removed and damaged in front of the Atlantis, what is the process in terms of, A, determining how much damage that is, the dollar amount, and how to rectify it?
Sure. So the tree warden has jurisdiction to rectify it, and also he has the fines and the general laws, as well as the town ordinances. You know, I think the most important thing is getting trees back that were identical to the trees that were taken down. That's, I think, the most important thing. And, you know, either they pay for us to do it, or they do it themselves under the supervision of the tree warden. But they, you know, if they don't cooperate, then we'll go with fines. And it depends on the width and diameter of the tree and how many rings inside the tree. It's a complicated formula that I'm glad I don't have to figure out.
[laughing]
But yeah, so the tree warden's aware of that and his power and stuff like that, and we'll support him in any way we can.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. And I do want to say, Councilor Aiello was quick praising myself and the town manager for the ferry, but I don't want to diminish at all his help in that effort. And he provided a lot of support and a lot of help, so I thank him for that as well. Moving on to school department report. We had a school committee meeting last evening. It was discussed in the prior school committee meeting. They talked about accreditation, and they were waiting for the final verdict, and the NEASC had gotten back to the schools prior to last night's meeting with a full accreditation, which is fantastic for the town and for the schools. And I thank the school department and all the support for all their help in going through that lengthy process and coming out with a positive result. Also was discussed, there was a quiz bowl at Malden Catholic where our Winthrop Middle School team competed and won first place. We want to thank the advisors, Mr. Farnsworth and Ms. Foley, and the children, which I might mispronounce a few names, but Joseph Disney, Roy Konopaska, Mazura Shio, Eric Briggs, and Eloise Farnsworth. So congratulations to them, and thank you to their parents, and also to the advisors for helping out. And that's a great, a great moment for Winthrop Middle School.
Bless you.
Now, moving on to old business, Finance Department Councilor Fusillo. I'm having a senior moment.
Same precinct, sorry.
All right. So the one motion that we had in front of the council, or the committee, rather, was for the sale of the Boston Whaler 25 Guardian. This was a boat that was a surplus from the Harbor Master. So the motion reads, "I move that the town council declare as surplus the below vehicle, thereby authorizing the treasurer collector to post for sale through an approved auction site or take any other action relative thereto." So in the meeting, we determined that unanimously a positive recommendation to move forward with this motion.
Okay, seeing a positive recommendation, it does not need a second. There's a motion to surplus a 1991 Boston Whaler. Any discussion on the motion? See, Councilman Munson?
Do you guys have a rest estimate of how much it's valued at?
I don't have that number. Town manager, would you have that number?
No, the procurement officer, when she sends it out, will have looked that up and put minimum bids if she feels it's necessary.
Thanks. I do know there was also a question in the Finance Committee about where the proceeds from that sale would go. Robbie was not available to attend the meeting. We would like to, a notification of that, we're assuming it's going to the Harbor Master Reserve account, but we were not sure who purchased the vehicle, and if the town purchased it, we would assume it would go back in the general fund. But those questions, we would assume, would be answered.
I'll confirm with him, but most things that are auctioned do go back to the general fund, even police stuff that gets auctioned goes back to the general fund as well. So I will double check with him, and if I'm incorrect, I will correct myself at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Thank you. All right, new business. We get to reappoint Town Manager interim, Terry Delahanty, for another 30-day term. The interim town manager's term expires this week. The new town manager will not be taking office until May 23rd. So we would, I would entertain a motion to extend the interim town manager contract until May 22nd, 2022.
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Fusillo, second by Councilor Belcher. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Congratulations on another month. I'd also like to take this moment, since we have a few minutes to spare here. Our new town manager, Tony Marino, is in the audience. He is eager to go. He will be starting May 23rd. He's taken time out to go to this meeting. He's been to a few Finance Commission meetings. He will be attending the Spring Forum in about 15 minutes. So we very much look forward to working with Tony, and thank you for being so attentive to the town of Winthrop.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Okay, appointments. I have a few appointments to make. That the town, I will read the motion, that the town council accept the appointment made by the town council president, Letyr, to appoint Cindy Silver to the Scholarship Committee for a term expiring June 30th, 2025. I will make four motions, if nobody minds, and we will take them as one. Town council accept the appointment made by town council president, Letyr, to appoint Vanessa Flavin to the Scholarship Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2025. Town council accepts the appointment made by town council president to appoint Wendy Millar Page to the Scholarship Committee for a term expiring June 30th, 2025. And that the town council accept the appointment made by town council president, Letyr, to appoint Catherine Zalia to the Scholarship Committee for, oh, Caitlin, to the Scholarship Committee for a term expiring June 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion for those four appointments?
No.
Motion by Councilor Belcher, second by Councilor DiMarco. Any discussion on the appointments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much for your contribution to the town. It is well appreciated, and that is a fantastic committee to be a part of. I also have an appointment, that the town council accept the appointment made by council president, Letyr, to appoint Nellie Kurtz to the Cultural Center Council for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Motion.
Motion being by Councilor DiMarco, second by Councilor Belcher. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. And I have a motion that the town council accept the appointment made by town council president, Letyr, to appoint Terry Delahanty to the Winthrop Retirement Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2025. Zero motion. Motion by Councilor Belcher, second by
Second.
Councilor Fusillo. Any discussion on the appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Congratulations, you're back in business now.
[laughing]
You know, I'm looking at public comment, which, and I'm looking, oh, there was a public comment that we just blew right over. I apologize for that, but I will open the floor for public comment now. Okay.
We are not on Zoom. I don't have a
Okay, public relations, upcoming events. April 27th being tomorrow at 6:00, Charter, Ordinance and Review Committee public hearing at the Harvey Room at 6:00. This is incredibly important. These people have put in an inordinate amount of time and have come up with, have really gone piece by piece through the charter and through the ordinances to look for suggestions and ideas. So we encourage as many as possible to attend the Ordinance and Review Committee public hearing tomorrow evening at 6:00 at the Harvey Room. May 2nd, the tennis courts, there'll be a rededication of the Wallace B. McLean Tennis Courts. That will be prior to the boys' opening tennis match, I believe, opening home match of the season. May 4th, 2022, Gorman Fort Banks National Walk and Bike to Work Day. May 7th, 2022, We Are Winoc fundraiser, Miller Field, 11:00 a.m. May 21st, 2022, again, as town manager said, Paxton Rec Spring Fair and Craft Show at Ingleside Park from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And June 4th, 2022, a rabies clinic, location Winthrop Auditorium, front lobby, 10 to noon. Dogs must be licensed before vaccination. Town Clerk's Office will have a table for licensing. Any other public comments? Councilor Honan?
Uh, no, just want to say thank you to Jeanne Maggio for doing all she does for, you know, licensing and vaccination in town every year.
Thank you. Councilor Fusillo?
None for me.
Councilman Munson?
I'm all set, thank you.
Councilor Belcher?
Nope.
Councilor DiMarco?
I'm all set, thank you.
Councilor Aiello? Councilor Farkas. Vice President Magriero?
All set.
Denise, anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm good.
All right. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
There's a motion to adjourn, second by Councilor DiMarco. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. So the town charter states in Section 912 that the council will conduct two forums, one in the fall and one in the spring. And the one in the spring will focus on budget and other spending items. So this evening, we will ask the interim town manager to perform his last forum. And I turn it over to Town Manager Terry Delahanty.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the council, as well as my department heads, for all their support over the last year, and continued support as I moved back to the police station and helped the town manager out. I'd be remiss not to thank interim CFO Steve Cerulli, our assistant CFO, Robert Powers, and of course, my assistant, Larissa Wojcik, for putting the PowerPoint together, the booklets together, and helping me manage PowerPoint and getting everything established here tonight. So thank you, Larissa. It is Administrative Assistance Week, so we can't forget to thank our assistants, who usually So as we began the year in early July, Steve Cerulli said, listen, we can't wait to November. We must start the budget right away. We got to start working on the budget and towards the budget. Prioritize our goals, see what the weaknesses are in last year's budget and fix them. So he was a constant reminder to me, the department heads, as well as, I believe, everyone on the Finance Commission and the council, trying to guide us along to think differently in Winthrop, and not just try to patch the holes, but look long-term over a longer period of time and find the structural deficits and fix them, so we don't have to worry about them. This budget does a lot of that. You know, we still use some opers money in this year's budget, as we did last year's, as it comes in through lost revenue. So we'll get to all of that. The overview, we'll go through the general funds, revenues and expenditures, enterprise funds, and we'll go through the capital plan tonight. This PowerPoint presentation will be posted, or is posted, as we speak, as well as the complete budget that was submitted earlier tonight to the council, will be posted on the town manager's website, and can be accessed to anyone in the public wishing. If someone who's not computer illiterate, doesn't want to navigate the computer, the town manager's office, the library, and the town clerk's office will have hard copies of the presentation as well as the budget. the Town Manager's Office, the library, and the Town Clerk's Office will have hard copies of the presentation as well as the budget. So you can go to those locations for anyone who does not want to use a computer. The budget initiatives, when we first looked at it, we looked at the, the school department, and we looked at their needs and what we gave them last year and what their needs were last year. And, you know, we're off about $900,000 to what we gave them, to what they really needed to run their school department. They passed their way through some grants and made it through the year. But again, we felt next year it was absolutely necessary to increase the school budget. We did so by $300,000, moving down to $900,000 in this year's budget. Still not the 1.3% that was requested last year, but it got them more money and closer to realistic goals. They will still need to look at using grant money to fill some structural gaps. So moving forward in the years to come, the school department is going to definitely have to look, how do they fix those structural deficits in their budget? Because they're relying on a lot of grants last year and this year. We felt it was necessary, and I, Council, I applaud you for this. You know, I think it was a hard thing to do, is to look at the Town Manager's job and job description and what we paid the Town Manager and move that up. And, you know, that was a, a goal for 2023, and it happened in 2022, and we got ourselves a good, sufficient candidate. And now who's under contract with us? So thank you for taking the, the lead in that. We increased the Inspeccial Services Department by a half a inspector. We moved a part-time employee to a full-time employee that can do more house inspections. Inspeccial Services is one of the key departments in new growth. So if we don't have enough inspectors inspecting it, the Assessors Office doesn't know that they're, that they're doing work, and then they can't, we can't get new growth. So we're limited to our Prop 2.5 restrictions unless we find new growth in the community. We reestablished some of the Department of Public Works positions. Year before, Steve Calla's departments were cut by four DBW workers. I started off promising him I would return all four. By the time we are submitting this budget, I have failed and only had two positions that I could fund him. Things changed along the way, and those things were, you know, health insurance. We expected to be at 5.2%, it came in at 7.4%. That changes everything we can do when those fixed costs change higher than we expected. We begin to fund our OPEB, other post-employee benefits. So we have to look at that, and how do we aggressively attack that? We did a really good job on our retirement plans and funding our retirement plans. And in 2028, I have a chart here from PEREC that shows in 2028, we will be fully funded. I know the Council President's already thinking about, what do we do with that money? And how do we fill some structural deficits? And do we use that money in 2028 forward? So I'll let him and the new Town Manager work that out in future years. Other issues that were identified was IT strategic plan. Again, this Council has handled that through free cash and voting for that, and we have had them under contract that will be starting in the month of May. The classification, paying classification studies for department heads, non-union employees and unionized employees is very important to see what we're paying our employees. Are they being underpaid, overpaid? Are they being paid adequately? That's necessary for any negotiations the new Town Manager will head into. Give them that, that tool and that asset to know where, where we stand amongst our peers. So that, that's another great job by this Council, taking those two things on. And the third thing they took on and funded already that we don't have to worry about in 2023 is the Enterprise Fund evaluation. And, you know, we talked about that, and, you know, how do we, it's not about, should we eliminate an enterprise fund? Should we call it, it's more, should we call it an enterprise fund or revolving fund? Or should we fund some of the positions in these enterprise funds through the general government and through our general funds? That's the conversation that we need to have. This is our revenue forecast, and you can see it's comparison from 2022 to 2023, and the percentage changes are here. We start with the expenditures of Town Departments, the school department. You can see their increase is just slightly north of 3%. Non-department increases, slightly 4.34%. And then you look at our enterprise accounts, we're down on some of the enterprise accounts. The revolving accounts stayed just about the same, it's about $2,000 there. And our capital projects is a significant investment in our capital. One of the things I think we're always critiqued at, I think, at council level, as well as our insurance level, is the commitment we're giving to our capital, which is our buildings and our vehicles. Every, every year, we have an insurance assessment, and they give us things to work on. And I'm proud to say that we worked on those things last year. You know, the police department, air handlers, generators, you know, we're working on some of that stuff next year. And we'll go through that capital. Pico, Pico Beach Generator for the pump station down there for next year. It's necessary and needed to keep those people, everything pumping down there in case we lose power. So our revenues, our biggest revenue gainer here is property taxes. We can only increase them by 2.5% each year, unless you have new growth. This year, I think we'll have substantially larger new growth with the center being built out. Fremont Street Building, there is the Shirley Street Project going on right now, and there's another Shirley Street Project about to begin. So we start to see some new developments and some old developments going from apartments or condominiums or to homes, or they're going from hotels to condominiums. We'll start to see some, some appreciation there. I think the one on Shirley Street, it was a million-dollar assessed value as a, as a hotel. It should bring in about $10 million value as condos. But you look at the difference between that, it's only about a $78,000, $79,000 gain for us as new growth. But we'll take what we can get. State aid is our second largest revenue. Some of this is unrestricted, and some of it's restricted to Chapter 90 and/or school funding. Our local receipts, here we saw a slight increase over last year. Local receipts concern me. They should concern everyone as inflation continues to rise. People have to start to prioritize what they, what bill they're going to pay, or what, if they're going to buy a new car, or they're going to spend that at the grocery store, or unfortunately, on other necessities to support their children, clothing and stuff like that. So I purposely held local receipts down until we see how we come out of this public health pandemic and also how we coming out of the inflation that we currently see in the, in the, in the world, in Massachusetts, as well as other states across the United States. I was very encouraged yesterday to see a sign for gas for $3.85. That was very good. That told me that we're starting to rebound on our gas and oil, which is, is good because people will have more income to spend in our local meals taxes and, and housing taxes. So we're, we're happy with that. Our enterprise funds, as I said, remain just about the same. The revolving fund is remaining about the same. That's basically the E.B. Newton. In our capital projects, there is significant investment there. The property taxes, I said previously, you know, we get, we always start here. This is our prior year tax levy. This is our 2.5%. And of course, new growth, we had a $232,717. Again, we had about $239,000 there. We're waiting to see how everything plays out. I'm hoping to exceed this new growth number, but I don't think putting it in higher than that is responsible. So we purposely kept it down. You know, we've got a minus abatement, so we're obviously taking out for any type of tax title lawsuits that we may have, and that goes into our overlay accounts. So our annual levy is down here with our debt exclusions and everything else, which is basically our overrides for our school, school buildings, and hopefully soon, fire departments. Right, Chief Wiley? Our state aid comes in as Chapter 70. The unrestricted state aid is $4,758,416. Then we have our benefits for the veterans to get our $12,000, $12,953,735. You can see it's up about 6.5% over, over last year, which is a very good, a very good increase for us in state aid. I'm being told this year, the House is saying that they are going to fully fund charter schools. We're still waiting to see that fully funding of the charter schools. And what does that mean? Does that mean they take away our assessments that they give us? And if they do that, our charter school assessment is about $435,000. But when they say fully funded, you got to look at the definition they're using at the State House as what that means. So I caution to get too excited about that. Our local receipts, as you can see, we're holding them, you know, pretty steady as, as of last year. You're going up a little bit on our, on our meals, staying same on our meals tax. This here is what we actually collected through 33122 with the projection out of what we would collect in April, May, and June. Dick Hingston, our internal auditor, has made those projections for us and has told us, this is what he thinks. On June 30th, we're going to end up with excise tax, meals tax, room tax. So, you know, these numbers are good, but the true here is in red. If you look at the $670,215, that's what we'll be in, in the black at the end of the year. If you take out the $450,000 in OPERAS money, it really brings us down to about $220,000 that we have with wiggle room on a huge budget. That's very small wiggle room that we have when you take out the OPERAS money. So I caution that you look at these numbers, when you minus out the OPERAS every time that we think. Now, the other things that could create free cash is turnbacks from departments. And whether they had mid-year hires might turn back some money, we'd have to look at the turnbacks, but you can never count on turnbacks to sustain in future years. You can only count on what you're, what you're actually collecting in revenue. And keep your projections low and to widen the gap, if at all possible. Other revenues, you look at the cemetery, the regional 911, that's action ambulance fee that we receive from Action Ambulance to dispatch them. So we get $48,000 a year. It goes in to offset the 911 expenses, expenditures and assessments that we receive from the Regional Board. And we, you can see here, we're bringing in $450,000 from OPERAS, and we're doing that through lost revenue. We had a projection out to make sure that this was absolutely kosher with our auditors, and they said that we could actually bring in more, but we think bringing in 450 is enough to get us through another year, and it also leaves money on the table to do other projects. As we said, the 2.5% is our, is our cap. You get the largest revenue source, local receipts is 1.5%, state aid is 2.6%. 3% growth across expenditure lines is not sufficient when you have a 2.5% cap on what you can raise taxes. So most of our fixed costs are going higher than 3% as we saw with health insurance going at 7.4%. So each year, we don't know how those fixed costs are going to rise and lower. We also did some structural fixing in the electrical lines, which was not funded like it should have been. They left $80,000 off of last year's electrical line for payment of our streetlights, which is a reoccurring cost every year for our streetlights. So we fixed that during this budget process. We came to council to actually fix that in last year's, in this year's budget, mid-year, and they, they did actually that. So we appreciate that. This is just a breakdown by department. These are rolled up expenses, so you don't see all the detail, but in the budget book, at the back of the book, you go to what department you want to look at, and it shows an unrolled expenses. It'll show personnel line, overtime line, purchase service line, longevity lines, night differential lines, your Quinn lines and all of that. So these are rolled up for convenience purposes, so everyone can get a quick glimpse of what department and what they're actually getting for that department. If you want more detail, to go to the budget book in the back of the budget book, line by line. Public Works, General Fund Forecast for Public Works, one of our most important departments. Snow and ice is always a concern. We, we can actually underfund the snow and ice. We do have to pay, pay it at some point, so we got to keep that in mind. And typically, $135,000 is enough to get us up and running, repairs, and maybe our first round of salting. But, you know, usually by February, we're already expanded to $135,000. So we're always looking at ways to increase that in future years. Cultural and Human Services Lines, this is a line that Meredith Hurley, we wanted to give her a part-time clerk. Now, we come to the realization, we couldn't afford to give her that clerk, so we took that clerk away. It was a part-time clerk's position. We also had to reallocate funding around the opiate settlement agreement. We took the $18,000 that goes to the peer coach, threw the general fund away from her, and we supplemented it with the opiate settlement agreement. So that freed up $18,000 to cover the expenses that went up, such as health, our health costs. So once, once we had that gap, we had to go and dig around and look around to where we could move money and where we could move positions to and from. That's, opiate settlement is not just a one-year fix. It's a reoccurring settlement agreement. The first year is $36,000. The prior, the next 13 years is about $28,000. So the $18,000 that we committed to her is a long-term commitment, so it's not a structural deficit. And that opiate settlement money can only be used to address opiates, drug abuse-related efforts. So it's very specific, and it's very fitting to fund the peer coach through that settlement. These are our non-departments, other state assessments. This is what we have to pay out, Northeast Regional Vocational School. You'll see our assessment here. Here, this is their bond, the first year of their bond for their new school. Next year, their bond, you know, goes up significantly. And then by 2025, we're up to $435,000 for that bond. We got to find a way to pay that. So we, we don't, I don't know what the avenue will be to pay that. For schools traditionally, we do debt exclusions. And I'm going to leave that to the Council President and the Council to battle out, because I'll be back at the police station. There's other, other mechanisms available, such as when we fully, fully appreciate our retirement, we were thinking we, we should move it to OPEB, and I think the Council President said that might be something we can not put on the backs of the taxpayer, but use that money maybe potentially, is his thought process. So there's two thoughts, and there's nine you debate, debate, and, and see where we go with it. You can see the electricity, the increase here in the electricity is for those streetlights, so we don't have a reoccurring problem this year. The gas, we brought the gas prices up a little bit, vehicle fuel, and I'm happy to see them come down because I didn't think $20,000 was going to be enough for the fuel expenses if they keep on rising. And that's basically the, the big ones there in what we have done. Our solid waste fund, we're going down in our commitment to the solid waste, our trash, we call it solid waste. Other people are going to refer to it as the trash, the trash fund. So we've downgraded that commitment on the trash fund significantly to $970,000. Last year, we paid almost, you know, $1,264,000 for that fund. And everyone's going to be saying, well, how are you doing it? I checked in with the Director Calla this afternoon, and we can sustain that moving forward and not increase one penny for a barrel. So we can sustain that moving forward, even with the reduction we gave it, which is very good. I'm happy, I'm happy about that. We're watching it on a weekly and bi-weekly basis, what we're spending and what's coming in. I think, Steve, you told me about $120,000 hasn't been collected. Just over $100,000 has not been collected. Phenomenal for a first-year enterprise account to collect almost the entire revenue. And we still get three, two months to go to collect that. If people don't pay that, it will go on as a tax lien. We will eventually get that money, just might not get it this year. So even with that $100,000, slightly over $102,000, we still can afford downgrading the tax, the trash to this. But there's a decision that has to be made by the Council, and that decision But there's a decision that has to be made by the council, and that decision is whether or not we're going to do one barrel or we're going to do multiple barrels. Or we're going to do pay a trash bag if you go over that one barrel. Those are policy decisions, and those are not managerial decisions, and I look forward to hearing the council debate that, those issues. And I know there's arguments on both sides, and, you know, I hear it every, as I walk the street, people feel that they should be able, $160,000 I'm paying you, I should be able to throw out what I want to throw out. So I get it. You know, I have a one family that's classified as a two-family. I don't want to give up my two families, so I paid for two barrels, because I don't want to, I want the advantage of a resale of a two-family. So I'll pay my two barrels. A lot of times, I use one barrel. So I get it, and I get people, I don't use my in-law, or I don't do that, I'm in the same position as them. So we have to, this is, you know, this fund has really, I've been grateful for the management of the fund, and I'm grateful the fund is doing so well, and that we don't have to increase any fees on the trash fund. Employee benefit costs is all what we pay, our group insurances, you can see are here for the town and school, it's broken down by what we pay for our retirees' health benefits. Unemployment for the town and school relatively low, glad to see that. Now, workman's compensation, rather low for, you know, slightly north of 600 employees. So we're happy that we see those. One thing we did try to do is a vacation sick buyback program and start to fund that program, and we weren't able to do it once we got increased fixed costs. So we had to back away from that as a commitment, but in future years, we left this line in here for future years. So what does that mean? Every union contract has, if someone retires, whatever they have on the books, up to 200 days usually common in most of our contracts for the unions, they have up to, I think, $54 a day to be bought back, not to exceed $9,000. So that's the police contract, I know that one. So I'll speak to that one. There's no way to fund that. We don't have it funded in our budgets, so what I do as a department head, I have to manage that. Someone retires, I have to not fill that position until I recruit that 10 grand, and then I can hire that position. So this was to give relief for that, and to start to build a fund so that departments wouldn't have to wait, they could fill it immediately. You know, so the fire and the police and DBW see this often, people transferring and leaving mid-year. We've got, I think, two more going to the State Police Academy in May. I know the fire department's always being poached from the Massport, and Steve Calla's no different from his employees being poached by other agencies. This is the PERIC pension forecast here, it goes right through 2027, which in 2028, we should be fully funded. This is from the PERIC book and copied from there. It looks lousy up here. In the slide, it actually looks normal, so when people read it, when they print it or they look at it on a regular computer, they will actually see that. So that's just a cut and paste. This is our state assessments, this is who we pay. You can see the MBTA, we pay them $446,000, that's for the bus services, mosquito control, air pollution, metro area planning council, we receive benefits from them, and so we pay them as well. And this is the charter school spending. As you can see, charter schools sending tuition is $438,000, so I'm waiting, anxiously waiting to see what the House is going to do by fully funding charter schools, and what does that Our enterprise funds, this is our water and sewer fund. I spent last, yesterday, all day with NBC News, who had a lot of complaints about our water and sewer rate. So I explained to them, you know, 79.82% of our water and sewer rate is made up of fixed costs. Our MWRA assessment, DP assessment in our bonds that we do for repairs in our insurances, those alone. What goes up every year? Our assessments, our insurance, and usually our bonds, all go up every year. So usually MWRA assessments go up between 3% and 5% a year. If it goes up 3%, that's 41 cents, I have to increase the water rate, just for the assessment. So, you know, we try not to increase it, but every year, it has to be increased. We got ourselves back in 2013 and 14 in a little pickle, and it had to be raised, I think it was $2.50 in one year, because everyone artificially kept it low, because they didn't want to take the heat for it. So they kept it low, and they never, they either wouldn't raise it, or they'd only raise it by 25 cents or 50 cents. Last year, our outside auditor for the water and source said raise it by a dollar. Our internal auditor said raise it by 63 cents. We went and raised it by 63 cents, and that was enough to get us through the year. We're going to take a look at it this year, obviously. The good news is the MWRA preliminary assessment, say that word preliminary, shows that it's only a 0.3% increase for the town in Wentworth this year, and not a 3% increase. But again, their final assessment will come in June, while after this has been voted on. So some good news, this is what MWRA has sent to Director Calla, and you can see here, the water assessment's down 7.5%, but our sewer assessment went up 4.6%. The difference here is our sewer assessment's almost doubled than our water assessment. So going up by 4.6%, twice as much, doesn't really give you any room with this negative, you know, negative 7.5%. So we're still going up 0.3% from MWRA assessment, and this would be a great year if this held Our Parks and Recs Department, you know, we talked about Parks and Recs throughout some enterprise funds, and having a review done of the enterprise funds to see if we should move some of the salaries off the enterprise back. We did give the Parks and Recs Department a $50,000 town subsidy. That was because the last couple of years, we've had to come mid-year to the town council and ask them to transfer money into Parks and Recs to make them balance. So we, this year, we proactively did that. You know, indirect costs, you know, I know there's a pink elephant in the room called indirect costs with enterprise funds, and, you know, they are going up. You know, Steve Cerulli has figured out what they should go up by. Robbie Powell said there's still room to even move it up higher, but we're trying not to break the backs of these enterprise funds either. What's the right number? You know, DOR in their 2014 memorandum says, "It's more of an art than a science." Every place does it a little differently, and there's no right or wrong formula. DOR does look at enterprise funds, and that's how we got ourselves in a little bit of trouble back in 2012, 13-ish. They came out with a mandate to raise the water rate, because they were concerned it wasn't sustainable, and we didn't have enough reserves. So our goal is always to try to have these enterprise funds have 20% reserve in their accounts at all times. We're going to take years to get there, but we've got to start moving in that direction. So, you know, indirect costs, those are costs that we'll actually pay for some of the town managers' time, legal team's time, treasurer's time that they give to these enterprise funds, as well as if they use the assessors' office, or some might not, but the voting people do use the assessors' office. Everyone uses the treasurer's office. Procurement, what kind of effort is being brought in by procurement? So the effort, I believe, was to try to get 1% indirect costs, and there's some that gets 4%, but most of them get 1% chargebacks, you know, as we see. So we're not trying to break these enterprise funds, we're trying to balance our budget and actually be transparent in what we're being charged and how they're being charged. Our waterways fund, mostly by our boat excise taxes, is funded here, and then there are actually appropriations and payouts, personnel going all the way down the line. These waterways enterprise fund forecasts, I'll be urging Tony to take a look at and to see where we have room to start repairing stairs and access to the waterfront. I know that has been people yelling and hollering that they want action and they want access. I know some are broken, some haven't been attended to. So we have to do a survey around town, find out how many access points, I think there's like 14 access points, Steve, all around town. So we'll be looking at those in future years, see if there's any headroom in the waterways account, if it's appropriate use, and start maybe one a year or two a year until we can get all of them accomplished. The ferry, we discussed this in great detail earlier, I was saving it for here, but we did discuss it at the council meeting, and I just want to make sure anyone who wasn't tuned in is familiar with the ferry. Last year, I think it cost us about $260,000, and we have been relieved of any debt by Mass DOT. Council Ailo and Council President Loteri have assisted on making sure that we're up and running for this year. We have a commitment from Mass DOT for about $179,000. A commitment from Quincy, based on a seven-day usage of $160,000 to bring this, and the fear block should make up the rest. The ferry is currently up in Gloucester, getting looked at and making sure that it's safe to be on the sea. It'll come back to Wentworth, it'll get an inspection by the U.S. Coast Guard, in the water inspection by the U.S. Coast Guard. At that point, we'll notify Quincy, we're ready to operate. The HR director has already recalled their employees, and she's getting them onboarded and up and running, and has been in communication with the captain already. So if anyone knows any captains, please send them to the HR office, or my office will be excited to get them onboard as well, so we can run during the weekend. Our revolving funds, you know, a tax title fund, this is a very important fund. These are the lawyers that handle all our tax titles, so people who don't pay their taxes for years, we kind of just cherry picked off a list of who we're going after. Now we have a system in place that anyone who doesn't pay their taxes goes to tax title. So the lawyers will file in court for us to collect their taxes. There's a process in place, I don't want anyone to think we're just going and taking someone's home. There's mediation involved and everything else along the way to try to get the person, the person needs assistance, we try to get them funding through Meredith Hurley's office and Barbara Pucci, who's the outreach specialist. Our counseling on aging, this beautiful building that we're sitting in, is the council who organizes some of their activities and stuff like that, that's not our department's expenses, it's a revolving fund expense. The Pauline Street revolving fund, and then of course, the E.B. Newton revolving fund here, you see a lot more, we have rental income coming in from there. Our Pauline Street revolving fund, there's nothing more that we'd see off the, like to get them off the books for next year. And that would mean pushing that building to seal. You know, that would be great to get it off our backs. This is not nearly enough money to keep that building open and pay our insurances and everything else, the $26,000. Breakdown of our total expenses by departments and enterprises, non-departments and school department, and our long-range capital plans. I just wanted to quickly go over this, because I know in the book, it's a little confusing, so I kind of simplified it for myself in what we're going to do. And I think I got it, I think LaRissa was nice enough to put it on a better slide than this, so you don't have to worry about the charts. Here it is. So our $704,000 capital improvement comes out of the stabilization fund, and that will fund the lease of the fire truck, which was voted last year by council. That's a multi, obviously a multi-year lease. That capital project every year is to replace a police cruiser, that will be on the $704,000 one. A fire generator, that's for the beach firehouse, they have a generator down there, and when the electricity does go off, not when it goes off, we're currently using the homeland security generator down there. So that generator, you know, is about $39,000. $10,000 with a computer for computers and the computer replacement plan for the entire town, we're doing $10,000 each year over multiple years to replace computers. There's nothing more than, more important to us than our computers at work. The zoning maps, we're committing $5,000. I know there was a question by Council Honan, is that enough? You know, I checked with the planner, and the planner feels that that is, will be enough. Offer an old quote, but people like to get into the towns and start to do these projects, so we believe, and it will be digitized. So yes, you know, that's, I think, all good and important stuff. And then, again, later in the year, I think '24, was it Rachel, '25, we talk about other maps around town that would be helpful for developers to have them already on hand here for us. The windows at the police department, $40,000, which I'm told is being done this year, so that could possibly come off. I'm hopeful to make sure that happens before I pull it off. So we're using some other money to do that stuff. HVAC boiler program, one of the biggest expenses is replacing our HVACs or boilers. So Steve Cerulli and I talked about this, and how do we do it, and Robbie, and we thought, hey, we should have a fund specific for HVAC boilers, whether it's school or town, these are big expenses, let's start putting money into these specific lines, so we're not hit upside the head with two boilers in one year, which I know we were hit this year with. The salt shed is the shed down at the DBW yard, it's an outdoor wooden structure that has, I think it's been in operation, Steve, 25 years?
Yes, yeah.
Since the building was there. So that's, salt gets put right up against the wood, which has a tendency to rot the wood, but there's no other way to do it. Other people, you know, used other types of material, which I'll leave to the director to research and see if he wants to do wood or other materials. $75,000 every year we put in the town building maintenance fund, and those are for emergency repairs throughout the year. Also, that $75,000 is used to specifically target, when we get our insurance report, certain things that are on our insurance report that they want fixed. So it could be when they walk through uplifted tiles, it could be windows that they just look at and see, and they don't, they, you know, they're going to, they're going to want that fixed. They want to see the improvements, or our rates will go up. So that's the benefit of giving us that $75,000. $100,000 for sidewalks, cemetery fence, $25,000, you know, Director Calla wanted, I think, a million three, but, you know, he thought the perpetual care fund could be bonded, you could bond under the perpetual care fund. We didn't feel comfortable with that strategy. We went $25,000 and do sections at a time, and do it as a long-term and long-range project. So I will speak with the new town manager when he comes in and see if he agrees with that strategy, if he likes Director Calla's strategy better. DBW leased vehicles, $109,000 comes from the $704,000, and $10,000 in playground improvements. Year after year, as I've been sitting up there at the town manager's office in 2017, one of the biggest things was we don't take care of our playgrounds. This is a commitment to say we're going to do an inspection of our playgrounds, and when Sean comes to me and says, hey, I've told you for the last three years, but no one gives me money, we can say we can fix that, Sean. So it's the support, Parks and Recs, and the good job that they do, and the issues they bring to us, it gives us the ability to fix. The revolving fund, we put $25,000 at the E.B. Newton revolving fund to repair the E.B. Newton roof. We feel that that can be sustained out of that fund. The federal and state aid is mostly Chapter 90 money and $280,000 in Chapter 90 money. So that's where the federal state aid comes from. And the water and sewer budget will have to absorb some capital projects, such as the sewer vac truck at $60,000, the generator for the Pico pump station, hydraulic PVR improvements. Steve, can you speak to the hydraulic PVR improvements?
Sure.
That's $100,000.
It's $100,000.
Yeah, just give us a general idea of what that is.
It's to retrofit the two pressure-reducing valves, which are main controls of the pressure coming into town, and to link the, better words, the communication between the PIV and the water now, to get a better hydraulic cycling in the tank to improve water quality and quality of the visuals there.
Does that help with the chloroform issue?
Exactly.
Is that why we're tackling that, right? And then there's two lead pipe debts on this capital plan for the water and sewer, both at $75,000, it's called Debt Eight and Debt Nine, and then inflow infiltration for $50,000. Steve, you could briefly tell us what that is, inflow. Steve, you could briefly tell us what that is, inflow.
So, we got a DQ mandate to do a sewer assessment, a 10-year replacement plan. So, we've done our feasibility study, we've done our survey work, Cameron and cleaning Cameron, and we put together a 10-year repair plan, and that's with that II analysis.
Continue that project on.
We have to construct.
Okay, great, thank you. This is all the stuff that we just said, capital improvements plans, this is our $280,000, and this is our water and sewer for $420,000. That will bring us to next steps in this process. Obviously, Finance Commission has already began, I've been, I sat with them a couple weeks ago, and they've been hard at work on a draft budget. So, we gave them and forwarded them a draft budget, very few things have changed between now and then, and me and Robbie will highlight what has changed, and hopefully, you know, tonight would be helpful to them to know what has changed. Meeting with individual departments have already started, I think DPW's this Thursday, as well as other departments, so we thank them for their efforts and the department heads for being responsive to the Finance Commission. Finance Commission will present to the town council their recommendations, and we're hopeful, before that May 31st meeting, I'll leave the council president and the Finance Commission chair to work out those details. The town council will hold a special meeting on budget discussion only on May 31st, 2022, and then the town council will approve the final budget, hopefully on June 7th, 2022, but before June 10th. A public hearing for the father's budget will be on May 17th, 2022, and it'll be publicized in the local transcript. I'd be happy to take any questions from anyone. If not, I'll turn it over to the council president. Seeing none, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
You either did a really good job or put everyone to sleep, I'm not sure.
I think I put yours to sleep. I put yours.
Well, thank you very much, thank the department heads for being here, we really appreciate your attendance and all that you do for the town. Thank the interim town manager again for all he has done for this town, especially over the past several years and his many terms as town manager. We thank Tony Marino for coming onboard May 23rd, and we look forward to that, and thank him for his attendance tonight also. Other than that, that will conclude the Spring Forum, thank you all for attending, and the council will meet again next Tuesday night at a regularly scheduled meeting, May 3rd. Thank you and good night.